All right, so welcome everyone. We are at a finance budget meeting on March 11th, 2020. I'm going to hand it over to Finance Chair Elizabeth Seifert.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this special budget workshop. The meeting was added to our budget review schedule in order to have the level of discussion needed while meeting our obligation to present the FY '21 budget to the Town Council in mid-April. So, thank you to everybody for joining us tonight. All budget workshops are open to the public, recorded and posted online with public comment well-loaded. The school board will open and close each meeting with opportunity for public comment. Questions and comments may be sent to me, Elizabeth Seifert, via email as well. Please go to the Town or School Department website, navigate to the School Board section, and click on an email link to send your thoughts to us. I am still going to read the entire thing that I read every night, although I will, I'm going to truncate the strategic plan goals tonight. The school board's goals for the 2020/21 budgets are: maintain and improve the high quality of education for every student; number two, careful examination of line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget; number three, support the 2020 through 2025 strategic plan goals. Those are posted online; number four, clear and continual communication throughout the budget process. And I'm going to move through those goals. So, we hold these goals in mind as we examine each cost center, each department, each school, and each program. As we move through each step of this process, we must also keep in mind the ongoing building committee conversation about the necessary improvements to and possible replacement of our buildings. So, just a quick recap, at the end of January, each of our administrators and directors gave an overview of his or her department or school, which included cost center information, staff and program reviews, and new staff and program proposals. At our second workshop, Business Manager Marcie Weeks gave us an ED 279 State Subsidy update, and then we began hearing answers to previously submitted questions. Last week, we, for the most part, I believe, finished up that first round of question and answer. I think there were just a few little things outstanding. And then we took a deep look at enrollment and staffing. Tonight, we will receive updates, if any, and discuss the undesignated fund balance. The board will then have discussion and give guidance to the superintendent about revision to the spending increase. At this time, the floor is open to any members of the public that wish to speak. There's no podium really to step off to, but fine. Oh, nice. Oh, nice. Would any members of the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Are there any updates?
Well, to date, we are at a 7.95% increase over the FY '21 budget.
Do you mind giving us the company chart that goes with that?
Which I did.
Yeah. That'll replace, I think it's, the first sheet in tax and funding impact.
As you know, we have included in this budget a 10% health benefit increase placeholder, not knowing what our final increase will be. We have been in touch with our main dental trust, main education association benefit trust, and asking them when they would, when they expect to reduce their range. They always release a range first of health benefit increases, and they reported that they hope to reduce the range on March 20. So, if obviously the range was safe from 3 to 8, we could drop the amount that we have in there to an 8% increase. And then, they project that we will have our individual district increases not later than April 4th. So, that's where we are right now.
So, later on in the evening, when we're talking about undesignated funds and when we're starting to think about giving the superintendent some guidance around our revised budget, so if you're looking at that spreadsheet, it's called Budget Tax Implications FY '21 spreadsheet, my favorite spreadsheet for a budget. If you look at the top right-hand side in yellow, you'll see that 7.95 is the current spending increase over last year's budget. And then if you look down to the bottom, you'll see what that translates to as far as tax impact, our portion of the tax impact. And for a long time, you know, people didn't understand why those numbers are different. They are. This is, they're based off different things, is the simple sort of non-mathematic way to say it. So, what we really will be talking about later on is that top number in yellow. So, I think there were a couple of outstanding questions from last time. I think somebody was wondering, Jason, something about foreign language. Kimberly, I think it was a follow-up question. I don't know, do you remember what you were? I don't recall what the question was, but I think you had, there was information that we forward yet that you were waiting on?
Sure. I think I've shared it.
Did you know what we're talking about? Because I don't know what I'm talking about. So, maybe you can tell me what I'm talking about.
Let me take a look. Would you like to address that right now?
I would love, like, if we can just kind of pick, I think there were just a couple little...
So, there, yes, the last time, there was, I'm going to find it here, there was a question about world language, and I only, I didn't have enough time to get that information from the department.
Right, okay.
And so, I concluded that, and I forwarded it, thank to Donna and to you. We shared, I believe, what we see.
But then I will apologize because I've been away from my email a lot.
Let's see. Let me find it. I think it's quite lengthy. Let's see. Okay, so, would you like me to, I can read the question and then kind of try to tease through some of it.
That would be, yeah, summarize it, that would be great.
So, this was, my understanding is that when we started introducing world language to the lower grades several years ago, this was accomplished by reducing the number of times per week that Ponco students met with foreign language teachers. If this is the case, how do the foreign language teachers evaluate the change? Does this sufficiently support our goals in world language, our new strategy, strategic goals around our global competency? So, let's see. If I could just quickly see if I can pick information out of this for you.
You can get that, great. I'm going to go in and try to make sure I have that, and I will share it with the board.
Okay, so, yes, and forgive me, if I didn't share it with you, I can reshare it too. So, it looks here like Marcia Chase, who wanted a little bit of time to consult with her team, and then she got this response to me. She's talking about, she's talking about guidelines, national guidelines, and it says, "They recommend a school year schedule of three contact hours over a five-day period to reach beginning language proficiency. And at this time, Ponco would require funding for additional staff and changes to the allied arts routine in order to meet that goal." So, right now, what we have is, so they're saying...
Two times.
Three contact hours over five periods, five days. Right now, we have an hour and 15 minutes over six days.
So, we're down into two visits.
Right, it's a 45-minute...
And a 30.
Visit and a 30. So, we are, you know, about halfway there according to what this says. And it just talks about the importance of frequency and regularity in the schedule. So, that's the answer, that, in their opinion, according to these guidelines, that no, we're not doing what we would like.
Thank you for providing that information.
Yes.
I didn't see it in the email.
I'm so sorry. I thought I shared Google Docs, but I might have put the wrong address in or something. So, I will reshare that.
Great, and I will share that.
Okay.
Can I just add to that? Because I was just reviewing the board meeting when the Foreign Language Department came to speak to us, which I think is also interesting. As a, as a department has grown in Ponco, it started with just fourth grade, and then, I think in 2000, they added third grade, so it was teaching fourth grade and third grade, and now they have all the way down to first grade. So, little by little, the program is expanding and growing.
It is.
And with hope over time, the time that students actually get to spend with the languages while it's growing, is my understanding.
Yes, and I do say, I will say too, that just full disclosure with, where we are just doing the hour and 15 minutes over six days. Even doing that, I have to keep after Marcia because she works a little bit too much. I have to make sure she's actually taking her lunches and taking, so she's stretched really thin to do the hour and 15, so that's something that I've observed.
Thank you. So, looking back, Noel gave us an updated proposal renamed Double Robotics. There was another question on the list for you as well. I don't know if you saw that. It was about the cost of maintaining the iPad, so we have a ratio of 2 to 1 in K through 2, and 1 to 1 in grades 3 and 4. And the question, so there was a question of cost of maintenance, and then is that ratio necessary? How are the iPads used in the lower grades? I don't know if you...
I have that here.
Yeah, I sent, I asked Amy Ford to answer it, and I sent it, but just to go over it. Also, here it is, right here. iPads are, iPad 2s, they were originally in the high school, and they have moved their way of, ventured their way down to the elementary level. The cost per iPad is $6 apiece per year, so if there's 100 students in second grade, it'll be $600. So, and, of course, there is also some quote "hidden costs," if you want to call it that way. We have manpower to, you know, put them into the MDM, take them out of the MDM, reassign them, re-tag them, so on and so forth, which is a huge effort. But, that's basically what the costs are. As far as what they're using for, Tom Cheltray would be more qualified for doing that, but one of the things that they do is they really do start looking at Google Docs and spreadsheets and starting to prevent, prepare them for middle school, okay? And that really starts at first grade, not so much, just recognizing, you know, doing this basic naming, this is what a spreadsheet is, and this is why it has squares and so on and so forth, just so that they can recognize that.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions? And then Jeff is not here. I proposed this kind of privately to Donna because I didn't think Jeff was going to, I didn't remember that Jeff was going to be here. My question was a little more specific. If we look at his proposal for a French teacher, and hopefully someone can pass this, you can pass it on to Jeff, and he can get a, get an answer about it. So, he has a proposal at a .4, and so I just want to...
Maybe Sony can help.
Yeah, and maybe Sony can help. So, my understanding was that we were going, that the hope was to add one section of French 1, and so I didn't know how that correlated with the need for a .4 FTE.
I mean, it seems like a bigger position than the job requires.
Correct. We might have to get that answer another time.
This might be a question that could be answered without Jeff. Are, is certification different at high school? I'm wondering if there was a language teacher added, could that perhaps benefit Ponco? You know, if there is, if there is a need there, you know, things are stretched, then is certification different for high school versus middle school?
It's K-12.
K-12.
For raw languages.
That would be tricky.
I was going to say, how would that logistically work?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking that it seems like a good idea, but on levels that would be complicated at many levels, a high school language teacher and an elementary language teacher.
I'm going to touch it and see if I can have an answer.
Yeah, logistics. I like the thinking out of the box, creativity for sure.
I think we've even seen that with our EL teachers needing to be broken up to two different positions because of that difficulty.
Well, I could speak to that just a little bit. I mean, I don't have an answer, but there are more pieces to the puzzle where we do share, we currently share, middle school teachers, a little bit...
I was going to say, isn't there a shared position?
So, there is some sharing going on, so perhaps the result could be additional shifting, if it makes sense, or, you know, like, high school, middle school, middle school, Ponco, something, I don't know. I think it's, it would definitely be a conversation. We'd have to see how that would work, but certainly...
And then you'd have to, and then it would be a scheduled conversation.
I think scheduling is the biggest thing. It's a high school schedule.
I appreciate the questions, but it's sort of overshooting to ask.
It's a great, it's a great thought, a great question. I don't believe an answer would be take some folks sitting down and figuring out what that would look like.
Were there any other outstanding questions, little hanging threads to pull off? See if Jeff answers. It's not a huge question, but it was just sort of like, didn't compute. So, if there aren't any other questions, kind of one other topical, you know, we've had a kind of topical nights about ED 279 and state subsidy and how that works, and another one about staffing and enrollment, how, you know, those are our big budget drivers, and taking a good look at that. And then, one last kind of topical thing that Marcie, Donna, and I all felt like we need to talk about is the undesignated or unassigned fund balance. So, if we flip to that new chart that Marcie just gave us, it's in the Funding and Tax Impact tab, it's the Budget Tax Implications FY '21 spreadsheet. And under revenues, you go about halfway down, you see use of unassigned fund balances or bond balances. So, my understanding of what the unassigned fund balance is, it's essentially what is left at the end of your budget year, and that goes into a fund. And it's, it's, you can't, you know, it's different because the Town Council has one as well, and there's a big misunderstanding, so I'm going to talk about it now. It goes into that fund at the end of the fiscal year, and when we are budgeting, this, at this time of the year only, we can use some of that as a carryforward to help bring our tax impact down. But at no other time of the year can we draw on that fund. It is not the same as a contingency fund. We have a line for contingency that is different. This is kind of a bigger safety net that we have used over the years when we've had really major cuts in state subsidy. However, because we had three years in a row of enormous cuts, we were, it was like, you know, 900,000 the first, I mean, it was all, you know, we've had many, many, three years in a row of major cuts. And you can look here and see that, you know, we have used a lot more than we are this year. For instance, I mean, there, there have been years that we have used, we've used, I mean, it says what we've used and then what, how much more. I mean, we used 800,000 one year because we had...
I brought this for you guys.
Awesome, let's do that.
This is from our auditors, and it shows that we're saying graphically.
Yeah, it, I mean, there are, there are years when we would have had to make major cuts to staffing and programs, had we not been able to draw upon the unassigned fund balance in our budget.
That the major cuts, I remember the conversation said that the capitalization schools would not look the same.
No.
There would not be foreign language programs, there would be not the technology. I mean, it would have been a very different...
It would have looked completely different. When you lose close to, I mean, we lost close to a million dollars two years in a row, and then we lost another 500 a year after that. Things were rough. And this, the board, and there are different people on the board, but the goals have remained pretty steady. The board and the community really don't want to have the sort of schools where we're, you know, we're gutting foreign language and music and arts and that sort of thing. And so, we were lucky that at the time, we did have funds in our unassigned fund balance to use. However, we are on the other side now where our unassigned fund balance has gotten pretty low, and we need to sort of have a prudent approach to helping kind of refund this. And so, you will note that this year, we are using $100,000. And that, you know, we're trying to use less and less over these, you know, over the last few years. We're trying to use a little less because there's a legal limit, first of all, to the amount of money we can have in that unassigned fund balance. It is 3% of our full operating budget. That is the ceiling. And I'm not an expert, but I've been, this is my third term on the board, and I usually listen. And every year, I've heard auditors, I've heard business managers tell us that it is prudent to have 1% to 2% on, you know, on reserve, and we're not there, and we need to be working back toward that. So, that's just something for people to keep in mind. Laura?
Can, can you refresh my memory? I remember we had a conversation about the unassigned fund balance last year, and what we did with those unassigned funds. Didn't we give money to our back so that the taxpayer impact would be so high? Am I recalling this correctly?
So, we used 300,000 of our unassigned fund balance last year to help ameliorate our tax impact. Right. But anything, once you do that, it's sort of, there are different, we get, if we get more from the state, let's say, that higher than projected, there are different mechanisms between the board and the town about how that money gets used. Typically, a lot of times, the town has said that goes straight back to the taxpayers, even though it was earmarked for education, whereas we have advocated that it would go into the undesignated fund balance. So, we need to kind of on a yearly basis revisit that agreement, but we didn't use, you know, anything extra or different. That, that was just the number that we landed on last year. 300,000 is what helped us get to a 5.9% spending increase and a 4.29% tax impact.
So, where's the designated fund balance in the budget? What percent are we at today?
We are, well, exactly right now, we are in audited fund, unassigned fund balance of 238.814, but it's really restricted right now because that's all we have, and we budgeted 300,000. So, that's why our, for this current year. So, that's where we are right now, our fund balance is 238.814, exactly. And we have budgeted 300,000, so the additional money that we received from the state recently, the 75,562, will make up that difference for us to get us to 300,000.
So, we won't be in the red.
Exactly.
And if we have the 300, just so you can do the math, so then what, because you were saying it's prudent to have 1% to 2%, so that would be...
Well, 3% right now on our overall budget would be $800,000. So, I didn't have the 1%, that would be, if you take that and half, it's like, so you're looking at 400,000. That would be, I think the ideal, because of the discussion, and Donna also, it's a good thing to take the relief off the taxpayers, we've not had any inclusion out of our year fund balance, but a lot can be used with that little amount, capital reserve, to be restricted back there.
Right.
Well, things like that, and keep, you know, initially adding to it, and we have a little bit more for capital reserve.
It's sort of tricky, I mean, so, and this is, again, I'm not an auditor, I don't work in the financial industry, anything like that. I think that it's tricky, it's tricky to try to, I think, build it up to that, close to that 3% level because I think, and I've heard this from taxpayers, it's sort of like, well, that's our money, you know, spend it or give it back, kind of thing. And then, you know, I think that it needs to be at a healthy level, and so, again, you know, I've heard over the years from many, many auditors and business managers, you know, 1% to 2%, so I guess, you know, maybe we shoot for like 1.5% and, you know, as we aim to try to get that fund to be healthier again, and make sure that we're not going, you know, we're not, you know, hanging onto the side of the table, hoping that we don't go into the red, that we have a healthy fund balance.
A 1% would be 268,000.
Okay.
Why don't we do here in the budget? We put that.
So, it's on the revenue side. On the revenue side, on this sheet right here, it's considered...
It's not in the expenditure budget, so it's in the revenue budget.
All the, on the revenue side. So, it like makes us, all the revenues here make up the total expenditure.
Right, but I mean, you were saying we're budgeting 300% of our spend.
No, last year, we budgeted 300. This year, we're budgeting 1.
Right, so, our current budget requires 300. That's why we're trying to, and we appreciate everybody being fiscally conservative this year, trying to get back up to that 300 so that we're in a good place by the end of the year, so that we have our full target. And the hope is maybe a little more by the end of the year to have 100.
So, if we have the 300, you're saying we would have like the 1.5% in reserve, which would be between the 1% and 2% that...
It would cover what we budgeted.
Yeah.
And I think we would like to shoot to have a little bit more in reserve.
A little extra, yes.
Because last year was the first year in quite a while that we had an increase in state subsidy. This year, we have, we still, we have a small increase, but still, you know, an increase that we're, we're close to level. You never know what the next year can bring, and so, it's just, it's prudent to have a healthy fund balance.
And I think that's a really good point too, Elizabeth, because I think the good news is, is that that's probably where you want to be budgeting at that level. It's a scarier, make sure you have to go up to this level, so be, have fund balance about is a healthy, that's a healthy budget, you know, the 1% to 30,000 budget. You're trying to get a good job, working your way down to a really healthy point.
Use of the fund balance. That looks like a hope is...
What do you think?
I was just, I was going to ask a question, so, for Laura's benefit, because I know she has this question. You're asking for a friend. Yes. So, this is just, it's, it's basically, it's a shock absorber. Is that what I'm trying to understand? We don't, we never touch this money, except when, because of fluctuations in state funding, it allows us to be, to not be so whipsawed with our own, okay? It definitely helps, you know, that big swing in tax impact. I think one of the desires that I have is that we could have a little bit more predictable, you know, tax increase. And, and, you know, we are really at the mercy of the state funding, so having that shock absorber, as you just described, is useful. But, you know, since we're on the other side of having had to use it to such a large degree, we now are tasked with making sure that we can build it back up for the, that eventual swing.
Right.
The pendulum just, we know what's going to swing.
So, we, we may absorb outrageous swings in state funding, but we're then going to protect our taxpayers by having this fund sort of hold on.
That's, that's what we try to do. It's what we have done over the years, and I think it's responsible of us to do that.
So, and then, this may be somewhat unrelated, but, so the undesignated fund is a fund we use for emergencies, and if we do something egregiously wrong, and we have to go outside and fight it to get funds, and, and how much do we put in the undesignated fund? And what do we put in there?
Well, we can't use it in an emergency. We can't touch it. It's not a contingency fund.
You were thinking of a contingency.
You were thinking of a contingency.
Or capital.
I meant, I said undesigned. I meant.
She's not saying unassigned. She's saying.
Undesignated, unassigned, it's the same.
Those are the same.
So, the contingency fund, contingency.
Oh, contingency, right.
Contingency. We have a contingency line of $100,000.
That's what Phil's looking for. I got it.
And they stand here, and you can find it.
Is cost center 9005.
90075.
And what percentage should that be while we're at it?
I think, so, I'll tell you that when I first got on the board, it was $30,000. It used, it, it, it went nowhere. It saved us from nothing. And over the years, through various superintendents, various board members really advocated strongly for having a, a better cushion in there, because the contingency fund is what we can use in an emergency.
Generally, except with the county principals, Princeton easy fund balance that we, we follow, it's just littering air. Okay, so what happens?
We did look at other school departments, Hope.
Yeah, most of the time, you see about 100,000, over 150,000.
We looked at other school departments.
And that means that they're not using the money where they should be using it.
All right, so what happens if we exceed that amount at any given year, just?
That, well, then that's what will affect your fund balance. At the end of the year, the auditors will do the final audit, and they'll say it was hypothetically, oh, you went over 55,000 in all of your articles. And now, your fund balance has had to absorb that over, which is the state.
Well, it's kind of, I think that there, there's usually wiggle room built into the budget as far as when positions are budgeted for. Sometimes there are savings when someone is leaving or retiring, and we're replacing that position with someone who is at a lower position on the step scale or something like that, so we have those savings. But then, you never know, maybe the person that, you know, we have someone that leaves and we have to hire someone, and they might be more expensive. And so, there's always a little bit of that sort of wiggle. And wherever we can find savings, those savings also can get moved into the, the fund balance. And whatever we don't use of the contingency fund, if we don't, that can be moved into the undesigned or unassigned fund balance.
Can I ask this imaginary question? Last year, we put 300,000 into the undesigned, unassigned fund. I think this is my understanding.
We are.
We're short, and so, the 75,000 that we found for the principal agreement students is going towards that so that we don't go into the red. Was that all the money that was in the contingency fund? There had to be, so then where is this 100,000?
No, we still have the contingency.
There's still.
Oh, no, this is, right.
A backup, right? That we didn't tap into to use for this year.
Right.
And how much was that in? How much is this 100,000 for this year? Is that all of what's left? Or if we take 100,000?
So, right now, we're at, our fund balance is 238,814, audited as of June 30th, 2019. So, we needed 300 for this, and the plan was that 238 should have been 300. But there were some circumstances that we could be taking care of.
Right.
So, then, so that's now, so that is representing the 300 we needed going this year. So, now we have our 300, good news.
Yeah.
So, by the end of the year, theoretically, we should have our contingency, our contingency account just stays intact.
As long as, like you did, as in.
As long as, I didn't want to say it out loud, but as long as everything goes well, we should have $100,000 from our contingency account.
And whatever else that.
And whatever else, best case, anything else in there.
It's under budget.
So, I see it's the money that comes from under budget. Okay.
That's the piece that I.
The money that comes from. We don't have that money yet, but we're.
We're trying to.
We're trying.
We try to get it.
100,000.
We do still have the money.
It's sitting. We have that.
Right, but I think it's.
We haven't touched that.
Two different budgets.
So, at the end of the year, it moves from contingency to unassigned.
Correct.
That's the.
Best case, best case.
Scenario.
Best case.
And then, as we go forward, if we're not pulling as much out of there, it can just grow a little more. We, over the years, we have, we had been able to do that, and if, we had an undesigned fund balance, or what do we call it? Unassigned, it changes from business manager to business manager. Stay on the same, unassigned, undesigned. At one point, it was 1.2 million, and we needed to, we had to spend it down.
By law, you probably.
By law, we had to spend it down. And so, we had to spend it down, and then we got some major hits from the state, and we had to spend it down even further. So, now we are where we are.
Now, we are where we are. Can I ask this imaginary scenario? At the end of the year, we have an extra 100,000 in the contingency fund that wasn't spent. It gets moved to the unassigned fund balance.
Yes, right.
Right? And let's say that we only wanted to spend 50,000, 500,000. No, 50,000, sorry. 50,000. I, numbers confusing sometimes. I had 50,000. And so, damnly, we just have 50,000 left over. That can be filled out year after year.
Exactly.
Okay, I got it.
You got it.
Thank you. I knew that, I refreshed my course.
Never hurts.
Never hurts.
Complicated.
So, this 100 is kind of banking on the contingency as well as anything that, you know, we were able to be under budget on.
And how likely is it that we will have that money?
Well, I had a conversation. Yeah, very good. I talked to our auditors this morning. I always like to call our auditors on a regular basis, because they're so excellent that way. And they feel confident with my projections, my numbers. I, I've talked to them, I'm meeting again with Jen either the end of this month or next month, because this is the biggest concern, the biggest project that I have to keep tabs on. So, they all feel confident that if we keep going at this rate, that we'll be able to keep going back with this effort. And again, thank you, principals, and we'll get a fiscally, very, fiscally conservative understanding with that. It's great. Thank you. So, that's the goal, and we're in the right direction, and I really feel like our auditors are behind us with, with all of the numbers and the data. And food services, the projections are looking good. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, and so, I think there's also a level of just sort of conservatism being practiced throughout the district at this time to meet this goal as well, which was Marcy was alluding to.
Yeah.
Thanking everybody for, to help, to help with this.
So, it's looking good. These are looking good.
Sort of, it's something that, that we need to pay attention to. It's, it's, it has a big impact, even though it's not staffing, and it's not enrollment, and it's not, you know, books and desks and that sort of thing. But it, this fund has been something that we have been able to rely on in incredibly stressful times. And so, I think it goes us to.
Well, we didn't have that 100,000 in there for next year.
Things.
Very impactful on the taxpayer.
Right, right. Even this year, even though, you know, we had a very small increase from the state, which we're grateful for. But as we have heard, we had, you know, some enrollment surprises at high school, where we had, you know, made some staffing changes, and so, there, there are some needs throughout the district, as well as just, you know, the straight rollover of staffing and benefits, so.
And I, I want also to have that, when I talk to other school districts, they have done the same thing that we're doing, which is a very, is a slow progression down, so it's not a shock to either side. And this is a really smart and intentional way of working our way back up to building the number up here. But just working our way down for the smaller percentage of using the budget is a really smart thing.
I feel like a smaller percentage, because you're all been told, you're more on top of it.
And then, you know, if, if the hard times come, you have something to rely on, which you can care for.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions about unassigned fund balance? Thank you, Marcy, for putting together all this data and the chart. I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. And we know that it takes a lot to sort through everything and keep tabs on this. Thank you for talking to the auditors on a regular basis.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, that's sort of the end of our topical part of the evening, and at this time, it's probably best that the board, if the board wants to just start having discussion, how do you feel about, you know, where we are? If you want to take a look at the, we just got a new, updated, new program position proposal tonight from Donna. And then, we can also look at the, back to my favorite spreadsheet, looking at, you know, the, our historical spending increases, which would be the end of the conversations and not the beginning. And then, at the bottom, if you look at the tax impact, so it just kind of helps people start formulating what they would like to talk about. Because sort of the end of this conversation will be us giving some guidance to the superintendent about a revised budget.
Maybe useful just to go through that sheet, see if there's any differences.
Oh, so, that came from me having to go through and make sure that those numbers were all accurate from the first time I went through it. As you all found in the first document, I had a nurse as full-time salary and the.
And benefits.
And benefits of, so kind of a, but it's cleaned up now because I had a second set of eyes, hopefully, and from our me. So, this, this document, I guess, gets a bit.
And so, this document. And is that why that, the spending increase went from 8. whatever down to 7.9? Okay. Thank you.
That's why I always ask, are there updates?
Our benefit numbers weren't correct for the high school teachers to the part-time.
So, a question.
Yeah, so, last night, they announced that about five teachers were retiring and worked how many years they were in the service. And how does that, how do we compare to the new pilot within me? Is there any difference there?
So, we can't predict who we're going to hire, so that's really difficult. For teachers, we usually hire, most of our teachers have master's degrees, and we usually look at from seven to 10 years' experience, so we, we project that into the budget. It could be somebody that doesn't make that much, or it could be somebody that's a little more. But we try to keep that in mind as we're going through this. For some of the other positions, it's based on their contract and what a person would make coming in, which would be different. And again, we don't know, for example, the transportation schedule, or we have no idea who we're going to get for that. So, we put a placeholder in there, make a prediction on what we think someone might come in at, as far as his experience. But it's, it's just, it's just an estimate.
So, the estimate is even now in our.
We usually, we usually make out, okay, no, it will probably, when we look at somebody who's been in the district for a long time, they would be making more than somebody probably that we hire that, that comes in new. So, but, we put that adjusted figure into the budget. So, those have been put into the budget, yes.
That was a question. Thank you.
Donna, the retirements that were announced last night are all reflected in what we're.
Yes, and you know that Troy will be down a teacher, and so, we've taken that out, so.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I had a question, and I don't know that we have, I kind of know that we don't have the answer, but I still want to ask it, which is looking at the facilities part of the new position proposals. Most of those are shared between town and school with maybe just one fully designated for the school. And are we able, and I know this is so tricky, and I'm sorry, but I have to ask it.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
How can we reflect the reality of what the town, so basically, we get like a reimbursement or a transfer from the town for the, the share of those custodians, we'll say. And it's part of the one-town concept. It's, it's kind of confusing that we basically hire all the custodians, even though they don't necessarily do all the work in our buildings. They also work in the police fire station, they work in the library, they work in the pool, and they work in town hall. So.
So, is the reimbursement 50% or?
There's a percentage of reimbursement, and the state is very interested in what we spend for our schools, and they want to report on that. And right now, it's very mushy together with what the town, what we spend with the town. So, Marcy and Donna are working on coming up with percentages.
Okay, so that's.
And they'll be collecting data on, you know, the time custodians spend working for the town, working in the schools, so. But it's really, it's very mushy now.
It's hard because, I mean, it's, it's reflected in our expenditures, completely on our side, and then on the revenue side.
We take the revenue.
You can see that we have a, a transfer.
Town reimbursement.
Right. And I think that it's going to take, it's going to take some time to work out what really feels like an equitable percentage for that reimbursement, because at this time, people really don't know what that's, that time split is. And so, there is a proposal that they would just, I mean, not necessarily punching a clock, but starting to just keep track probably over a year, because, you know, with events and different times of the year, it really, you know, there's a difference in how they staff and work in the different buildings. But just start to keep track of, you know, how long they're spending in the pool, how long they're spending in town hall, how long are they at the middle school, and just document that over a year.
So that the town reimbursement is more accurate?
That's the goal.
Yes.
Right now, it's at about a 13.14% for categories of custodians, maintenance, technology, and human resources and taxpayer.
That's our reimbursement.
Marcy?
Yes.
Under revenue, there, where it says town reimbursement for spending services for technology, service HR assistance. If you go all the way to 20, 20, 20, 21, and even 2019 and 2020, how come it's all zero?
So, it looked like in years past, what they did is they used the transfer as a revenue, and then they switched two years ago and used it as an expense credit. So, the state would get full expense recorded, and then to keep your budget down, you have the transfer coming in hitting the expense line as a credit. Whereas, before in the past, it was used as a revenue. So, it's really.
I see it's up above.
Just a reporting.
This is a reporting change.
I see it's up above.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the past three years that it's been shifted there.
John and I had lots of discussions about the best way for the school side. We really want to make sure the school side, the best way of reporting to the state.
You know, you want to clean, and you want to, yeah, everything being reported in the right.
So, that's how it says, does, a direct entry transfer at this point, and the money goes against the expenses.
Got it.
So, decrease the expenses. So, yes, it's been very hard to decide on the percentage in the document is, and then, you know, Joe and I have both been going back and forth, but I think now we can.
But are we going to have to wait one year for them to document?
For some good data.
Right.
It's almost like developing. It's almost like developing their cost plan, it's very complicated, and you don't have concepts. It's not necessarily like we really want to have that full technical cost percentage.
The tricky thing is too, is that we also share supplies. Cleaning supplies and bathroom supplies, and so that's snow removal. I was going to say, there, there are, there's all sort of like
There's a lot of
A lot of stuff to do with town-side people doing some maintenance on school fields, which I like to argue are community fields, not just school fields, but, you know, wherever that goes, it goes. But, so there's, you know, there's a lot of, I understand, everything's really mingled.
So, on this sheet, it is a bit back to the point you have referred to facilities and to Marcy's point. So, we only respond to about fifty percent of that?
No, right now, we have more than that in our budget and
Probably more like seventy, seventy-five percent.
So, is that number that's, that's the salaries, does that reflect seventy-five percent of the school budget on there? Or does it reflect the town as well?
Those are a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
A hundred percent, all this and that.
So, should it be minus twenty-five percent?
No, because this is the expenditure, the revenues. I, I mean, I don't know how you want to show it, because we do have to pay this out and then we get reimbursed.
Right, so, until, so when we get, when I get the notes of what the final positions will be, this is how it'll look, I'll put, I'll add the positions to our facilities department, put the total on in there, and it's then a net number.
After the transfer.
So, that will be reduced?
Eventually, but we have to show it as an expenditure.
We have to show the total expenditure because the expenditure comes from us, so.
So, if we get a bonus at the end of the year?
So, and the reason, I mean, I know it's not exact, right, that we're trying to get the data to be clear, but the reason that it's seventy percent school and thirty percent county, part of that is just the schools are a bigger entity, and it takes more effort to clean the schools, so that's why it's not fifty-fifty.
That's what there's
No one knows why
But that's the reason it's been like this in the past, is what I'm saying, is why this is coming, and that's why we want the data to see if that's clear or a little bit off.
The interesting thing is that we had this conversation in budget subcommittee or finance subcommittee, and no one knows why those percentages were picked.
Right.
No one can, there is no justification. There could be an assumption about the schools being bigger and more than him, but that is, that is not documented anywhere, and no one says that. It's just, this is how it is.
How long have we been doing it that way, sharing?
Forever.
Forever?
Since I worked here in two thousand four.
And it, I think that there are great benefits from it, but I think there's also, kind of, we need to figure some other things out.
It's tricky for the town.
It's very, yeah, it's very tricky.
And our state reporting, we have no idea how much we're spending on our schools.
We have to report out, we, we couldn't report out on cleaning supplies for the schools. We can't. So, that's, that makes it tricky.
So, we, when we present our budget to town council, all those expenditures are in ours? Or have we netted that out at that point?
Netted them out at that point.
Okay.
And my dream is that in the next couple of weeks, that maybe one of these positions would be, I, because I, my understanding is the town is considering their budget too, and this may be that they would have one. But right now, we have a hundred percent of the money.
Okay, but it does get netted out, so in other words, whatever percent
Right, we never percent lead, but we're asking for
So, for instance, Perry will have, has presented all of this on, on the town side, while they're aware that he's asking, they're aware that, whatever the, the current negotiated percentage is that we'll have to
They're going to have to
They're going to have to transfer that.
And ultimately affects the entire rate, so that's what they're considering to, in entirety.
Yeah, it is so tricky, because you have, you know, in voting, you have in the schools, right, the town events, or even, you know, just keeping track of where a custodian is working, it's not going to quite get to there.
No, it's tricky.
I have some more questions for Laura. I'm so good.
No, I'm asking for the benefit.
Yes.
For the benefit, okay. And Phil.
And Phil.
So, I, I, this looks sort of familiar, but I don't know if it's exactly what it was in previous years, but I, so what we're looking at here is the top line, yellow, highlight, percent is our, the school budget increase year-over-year, right?
Yeah, that's the yellow.
And green, that's the school portion of the tax probably increase. So, that's not the tax increase for taxpayers, that's our portion of, okay, so that's increase, okay, so that's, that's what
And, and what I will point out is that, so our portion gets put together with what the town is doing, and then they, there's some magic, and I'm not kidding, and it involves like the home, like homestead exam and all this stuff, and then it somehow magically comes out lower than that when it goes to the taxpayer. Do you know what I'm talking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, be careful when you look at this and think that that's a, a direct line to the taxpayer, because it's not. It gets put together with what's going on on the town side.
So, and we, we have very little control over how that, our, we have control over this yellow number.
We do.
Right, right.
And whatever we do to the yellow number, it will change the green number, and then it goes over to the, the town side. And I, I honestly have no idea, I don't understand how, you know, we had whatever tax increase from our side last year, and, but as a homeowner, my tax increase was lower than that because of whatever magic happens in town hall.
So, I have some follow-up questions, but so then, the top line is, it's the budget for the year and then the change for the last year. So, each year, I see, we went up, you know, thirty-two point two percent, two point four, two point one, and then last year was five point nine.
Do you remember why?
Was it, is that because it's the state funding, or what, that's our budget?
Needs assessment. Which is two hundred and fifty thousand that we don't have in the budget this year.
Okay, so, no needs assessment, but this year, our proposal right now is seven point nine five.
Okay, original ones?
Right, we started, which was the beginning of the conversation.
Wait, the needs assessment was how much?
Two forty-nine.
Like, remember what the original ask was last year?
That's where it was my question.
The original ask was about eight point one percent.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so we added it five point nine.
And we ended up, yes, we came to a meeting similar to this, and the board said, you need to keep it under six, so.
Was it two point, two point nine?
I thought that was the original, and then last year was one eighty-three or something like that.
I think you're right.
I think you're right, Kimberly.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it was closer to two, it was closer to two hundred, it was, but that, because they had brought it down.
Right.
You're right.
Right, because we were, yeah, projecting the first time.
It's still not in there this year, right.
So, taking out the rough needs assessment, it was four point six, it was said was four point six percent. So, it was three, two, two, four, two, one, four, six, seven, nine, five.
And, well, and that's the beginning of the conversation.
Right, and we also still have a ten percent increase for health insurance, and we're hoping that a ceiling soon where, really, that would be great, if it was at a seven percent ceiling, and we could take that down for the insurance cost, that's not a huge
Last year, we went down to eight percent, we dropped it because we got the ceiling. And we were able to drop out a little bit more than that.
When do we get them?
Our April third is our final.
Oh, final, yeah.
Well, we have ten percent in as our placeholder.
Oh, you can do that.
Oh, I So, for me, just one more question, because it's all going somewhere, because I'm trying to get to a single concept.
Yeah.
So, the two point one three eight million change this year, I don't know, I, I think in past years, we saw what percentage of the increase was contractual, contractual
Eighty-three percent.
Eighty-three percent.
Okay.
That's my favorite number. Okay, so that's, so the winnable rule we have is really only seventeen percent of
Seventeen percent.
Or staff, that we're talking about, all staff.
No, it actually got to my question.
Yep, yep, we're good.
So, our budget is sort of reduced, right? Facilities rental, what is
Yeah, I took it down because I, my projections show that that would be a little bit more realistic.
I see.
We need to get some more birthday parties into that phone call, Joe.
Is that what, I was curious, but the facilities rental is, is like when community services runs out, our facilities are very, but
And I'll look at the number again at the end of this month, I'll look at all of it on the revenue side again, because there's not a whole lot more, but definitely, we'll be looking back to make sure it isn't just the top in the revenue.
Let's see, so if eighty-three percent is contractual for that difference, then what yellow percentage would that equal out to? Are you, are you working that out?
I'm checking, I'm just seeing what the number is, what was the increase, I don't know.
You know what I mean?
I think it's on the pie chart in here already.
It is?
It's for this year.
Just to see, you know, what, what percentage real room do we technically have to work with? We don't want to do, work with at all for this, but to see
Well, it's tricky too, because
Last year, we said under six percent, and figuring we got that six percent number because we, we didn't want to touch the contractual obligation, so then we looked at
No, we did, because there's a lot of, we have new positions requested that
Right.
We need to evaluate.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, a somewhat big chunk is increasing the, on different terms, I'm honest with you.
Right, right.
Why we talked about it.
Right. And honestly, at this point, I would be, I would want, I'd much rather be conservative with a hundred thousand dollars for a budget for fund balance.
Yep.
Yep.
So, looking at the yellow number, it's basically eight percent, right, Marcy? And you say, if we cross our fingers and pray that the insurance would come lower, and you say the possibility come three percent lower, does that mean that three percent reduced from this, or no?
Yes.
We'd have a little decrease.
Yes, a little decrease.
So, what is our goal? Are we happy with a six percent? Are we happy with five point five? Are we happy with seven?
That's what we're here to talk about tonight, that's the guidance that we need to give.
So, that's not, feed around the bush and let them lead into it.
So, we can have that conversation, and what, I think kind of the, the good part of it is that we can have that conversation and give that guidance, and the reason we have the added meeting is that we'll give that guidance, and for the benefit of newer board members and the public. We, we do, we talk about different positions and that sort of thing, but in the end, we give a number to the superintendent, and we let the superintendent and the department heads of building principles work together to decide how to, how to achieve that number, because we've hired these people, they are our experts. And so, to say, no way to the school counselor, Jake, like, that's micromanaging, that's us not, not trusting, and also, we, we've heard evidence, that would also be us saying that, you know, we don't trust the evidence that you've brought us and that sort of thing. So, I just want to clarify, we, you know, we will look at the, the positions and talk about it a bit and that sort of thing, but in the end, like Nasser said, we are going to try to find a percent increase that feels reasonable, and with the hope that it actually comes in lower when we, we have the final numbers from health insurance and, and other sort of unknowns that are out there right now. But, again, it's, it's respect to our administrators, that they will collaboratively, could, long day, collaboratively come together and figure out how to do that.
And that meeting will happen on Tuesday morning.
Very.
So, I have some more questions. Or just observations, so you said it was eighty-three percent of that number is
Salaries and benefits.
Right, so I did, I quickly did the math, and I, that's a eighty-three percent of two point one million is one point seven million, and that roughly works out to about a six point one percent increase. So, that's sort of the floor.
It's the, the floor with new positions included.
Right.
The new positions?
We haven't, we haven't, I mean, these are all new positions.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I think eighty-three percent was, eighty-three percent of that number is existing positions, or?
This is the budget, it's a no.
So, we're going off this year, so this year, eighty-three percent of our budget this year, at which point is salaries and benefits. So, we don't know what it is next year, because we don't know what the final
I see, okay, so then, right people yet, and? Well, that's what I was trying to get to, and the math didn't make sense, because I, I wanted to see of the two point one million increase, what, what part is locked in?
And we don't, we don't know that.
It's usually around that eighty-three percent, if you look back in the history
Around eighty. So, then, so then, so around six percent, so I did that, and then I said, okay, so the difference is three, three hundred sixty-three thousand is this other piece, so then I'll go to this new position request sheet, and it's got a total of nine, nine hundred thousand, so I don't know how, go ahead.
I, I think I understand what you're saying. You're, so it's not exact, let's say hypothetical, regularly, typically, it's around eighty-three percent contractually every year, even though what we're seeing here is the number for this current year, not projected. This whole thing is projecting what people want, so for next year, without making the cuts yet, so this, this, this whole thing right here has the new positions in it.
I see, so the two point one includes new positions.
Right, so that two point one, perhaps, going back to Elizabeth's example, like, we may not believe that all of these teachers are here or are, are, are necessary, right? And so, we can go below six point one percent, because that is sort of sending the message of like, yeah, we can't do all of this. We would like to, but we can't do all of this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand that.
And the reason we added it tonight is so that we have time to, for them to do that work, with whatever spending increase we would like them to come back at or, or near, and bring it back to us and show us what it means, what the decisions are, and then we all together have to decide, that, that feels okay? Or no, that doesn't feel okay, that was too far, or not far enough, we have to have time.
It seems like when we decided on the six percent last year, that that was a number that in the end, everybody was comfortable with. It seemed like the town, the taxpayer, they had a smooth budget process, and that was a good number. So, perhaps we follow that same path this year, or what are your thoughts on it, the rest of the board's thoughts?
I, I feel like it was, it was an exception because we were doing the needs assessment, and so I, I would suggest we, we look to go lower, also with the knowledge that probably we're going to have a big ask of the town, you know, for something to do with, yeah, to do with the buildings.
Because in the future, it's going to be higher, so then we go lower this year, is that what you're trying to say?
No, we're going to
And that will cost them more?
Yes, yes.
So, can I speak to something that Hope was saying, and you were doing a little math over there, and I don't remember exactly what you said, but I think that you, I think you came up with a really interesting point that is worth verbalizing again for the public to hear. When you take that change of two million, one hundred, blah, 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 and you take eighty-three percent contractual, it left you with how much?
Three hundred sixty-three thousand.
Okay, so that's the non- So that's the non-staffing wiggle room if we take on all this responsibility. So I think the point that I want to make is this budget isn't that super easy to shift. It's very lean. And it's not that the ask from the principals and the administrators is above and beyond. There is not a lot of wiggle room to shave things off, right? Because if you are... If you give these teachers positions, right? And there's other needs around the schools that need to happen, there's just not a lot of room to cut. So I just, I guess I just wanted to point that out, that it is already very lean. And so some of these positions, teachers' positions, probably will have to be cut because we can't... I'm sorry, I want to clarify that. Thank you, thank you. Some of these, because that's what I'm pointing to, new positions here.
Proposed.
Okay, I'm going to stop talking. Thank you for the corrections, because they're super important, though.
Well, we don't want panic.
I don't want panic, and so I will say that again.
They're just proposals at this time.
They're just proposals, and they're new positions. And we may not be able to fulfill some of them. I think even though, I would... I'm going to speak for myself, they all sound wonderful, and I would love to be able to provide them all. But we have such little wiggle room that we may not be able to provide all those new positions that don't exist yet.
So if six percent is too high, because that was comfortable last year, but last year, we had the needs assessment. So if we sort of remove the needs assessment from the equation, you know, what percentage do we land on? Five point seven five? Where would we have... Hope, you did a little math. Where would we have been last year without those needs assessments?
No, but four point six. Yeah.
Oh.
Well, and we also had a high... The unassigned funds had a...
And we brought over three hundred thousand out of the unassigned funds last year.
And now we need to be...
And now we need to be more conservative about that.
So then, taking into consideration the unassigned funds and the needs assessment, what percentage are we looking at? Without Hope's math?
Well, because really, it's like a four hundred thousand difference. It's not just the needs assessment. We're also reducing the unassigned funds, so we're sort of double hitting.
Right, right.
I guess not double hitting. We're gaining by not having needs assessment, but we're losing it. So we're kind of equal, I guess, in a way.
So then is the six...
Take more medicine.
Or is it five point seven five?
Is it... Prun, I believe we've done this in the past, to give a few options, like a few target points? And say, what would it look like if it was five point seven? What would it look like if it was five point five? And what would it look like if it was five point two five or even five? And see, I feel like there was one year in the past that I could have more... That it was so obvious, and the teacher... That might have been the year that the principals came up to us and said, "If you want to go as low as, I'm using five percent as an example here, your schools will be different than the townspeople expect. And you are an example getting rid of this program or knocking this out of..." So if we can give a few...
And that was the same year that we got major cuts, too. We were absorbing major cuts.
No, I'm just... But it seems like, because six was something comfortable last year, but now that we have the unassigned funds that we need to build up and what we don't have the needs assessment, is the highest point that we want to be five point seven five? Or perhaps could it still be six?
So I also like to look historically more. And historically, we are in the three, two, and two. Last year was, as I will say to underscore other people's points, an aberration.
So did average.
How were we... How were those numbers so small, knowing what we know about... Because we're using the unassigned funds. So we're artificially... There's no way... There's no way we can do a percent without cutting things right now.
And I'm not advocating that we're in the threes or the twos. I'm just, I'm saying that six may have been comfortable last year for whatever reason, but...
And I think, I think Hope that we ended up in the three point two because we used that money from the continuing unassigned fund balance. And same with two point four in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. They were much, much higher.
So we can get there, but...
My feeling is I wouldn't... It doesn't make sense to me to just pick an arbitrary number that I think sounds good. I would say logically, I would say we want to go, we're not making any cuts. There's no reason to make cuts, you know?
Right. When we look, talk about proposals, they're not cuts because they don't exist yet.
We already know we're underfunded, so we at least have to maintain these status quo staffing and, you know, budget-wise. So if we take that and we add teacher increases, what's that? What is that percentage? And that's our floor. That's what I would say.
So we got any new position?
Just, and I'm not saying that's the target. I'm just saying, I would say six. If that number is six and a half, that's ridiculous. I don't want cuts. That's not our intention, right? So I would say...
That's usually something we can figure out. If we just roll over with adding no new positions and no new programs, just...
I ran some numbers, and the flat percentage with no increases, no percentage increase for contracts, it would have been around a four point three percent increase.
Keeping what are your positions?
Marcy, we're holding it flat to what this year's increase is? So that's two point seven five.
Got it. And that was four? Four point three?
It was just so hard, it's just so hard right now.
Yeah, okay.
But that's the straight roll.
So many things...
So that's our floor, for sure.
Okay. So we already know that. We don't have to put that one.
Right.
Do we know what amount of money equates to a percentage, like, one percent decrease in the spending increase? I can't believe I said that sentence. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, and right now...
Like, is it like one hundred, one twenty?
It's one percent. Let's start with that.
Let's do one percent. Because right now...
Of the total budget?
Yeah. Just to give you an idea, I had used a target number of five point nine percent increase. If we had to get to the five point nine percent increase, I have on my little sheet that we would have cut five hundred fifty-two thousand right now from our budget. But if you just look at a one percent...
One percent of the proposed budget.
Two hundred ninety thousand, two eight nine. Which is what I think you and I are talking about, Donald.
Yes. So every percent that you... Is two hundred ninety thousand.
One percent equals two hundred ninety K. And what did you say at five point nine percent?
Five point nine percent would be a total of five hundred fifty-two thousand and two hundred and two right now.
Two and a half, should I do?
Five hundred fifty-two thousand. Five five two zero zero nine. That's to get to a five point nine percent increase.
And so without knowing our health insurance increases, at least we have that sort of out there as a question mark. We also have teacher contract out there as a question mark.
Exactly. Those are the ones. Am I missing anything, Donald?
No, that's... And we figured out, we did some work on around health insurance percentages. It didn't end up being that much, really, unfortunately. Every little bit helps, but it wasn't hundreds of thousands.
Right, it will be our five hundred fifty-two thousand.
We also entertained the conversation with Tom about the Australian project manager. Any staff has been shared? I know we've been discussing that quite a bit.
That's all shared with the town.
So there's no absolute, like, beyond them or beyond us, hundred percent? Or the project manager, I guess?
That's on a pair, so it's already shared with the town.
So in addition to... Do we have a summary somewhere of the other changes to the budget in addition to the new positions total page?
I don't have a summary. I did, I don't have it printed out, but I'll get that for the next meeting so that you guys have a copy.
So if the new positions are roughly a million, that means there's roughly one point one million of other additions in the budget. Well, I like the idea of having a couple, like Heather suggested, a couple percentages. And I'd just like to hear a couple more opinions from the board on what those percentages should look like. From your own experience on the board and what you feel like the town could accept and so on.
When will we know the teachers' negotiations results?
Probably not in time.
Because April 30th is this insurance, so we're going to have to commute by then at least at the same time.
We're trying as hard as we can, and I'll certainly... We're trying really hard. We're in negotiations right now. We have to have it before we deliver the budget to Town Council.
Yes.
We have to have it.
Okay. So percentage is it is then? Let's see. Percentage is it is then? See what happens.
So what are your thoughts on percentage to take back? What, right, thanks?
Yeah.
Just if six is too high, just for some people that I haven't heard from, you know, I would say, okay, five point seven five, five point five, five point two five. But these are just arbitrary percentages, so...
And I kind of feel like we come up with those percentages and we see what the administration, what it means and what they can bring back to us.
But still, we have to think about what's the percentages for them to come back with that you feel from your experience with the town, you feel comfortable with, that this would be a pill to swallow, that, I mean, you can't make everyone happy, but...
Right. I know, it's, you know, just looking at this, in some ways, we do ourselves a disservice by buffering the tax impact. Because when you look, you know, across at the numbers, it suddenly looks like we have a huge spike when it does go up, but it's not that we're doing anything different in our spending. It's just that we can't pull anything else out of the unassigned fund.
Well, I mean, even if you look back to 2018, 2019, we had a really small spending increase, but we had a big hit from the state, and we still wound up with an eight point one percent tax impact. So, I mean, it's...
It's tricky.
It's tricky.
Yeah, just from my perspective, I'd like to see the range between five and six. You know, I look at those lower numbers, and it would obviously be great to take those percentages. But again, like you really said, I think it's just unrealistic. It's important, I think, for people to understand why that's low. It would be, we were pulling eight hundred thousand dollars on the unassigned fund, or using that as revenue, four hundred thousand, four fifty. And it's, that's not a real number. I mean, you know what I mean, like, we changed that number. If we were to, we could do that, but that would be responsible, what I'm hearing, at what I heard at the beginning of the evening. The one hundred thousand is more in line where it should be. So it's sort of more fiscally responsible to have that kind of unassigned fund balance.
We don't even have the number.
We can't do that. They have a question for you.
Oh, I must have...
So, yeah, just to finish that. So, yeah, so we don't have that, and it's...
Yeah, we literally don't have it. We have to build it up.
And so it's skewed. So it's sort of, the last few years are sort of more realistic. It's the level of... We would kind of expect that anyway, just pulling it from balance. Five to six is moving. Whatever chance it has to be.
Yeah, I mean, I'm feeling like around five point five and somewhere. And I don't need to be specific on either side of that, but that's definitely where my... You know, where I'm headed with that.
Since you said that the town costs or someone at the town halls, there's magic that happens between the yellow number and the green number.
Well, no, it's what happens between our green number and the number that shows up on your tax bill.
Correct. So just as we are obligated for the principals and schools and education academics, we're also obligated to our citizens in the town as well. So I would like to see the green number and then the yellow green number that you wish. But the green number should be somewhere around five, four, if you're not asking too much for tax because the bonds are on the horizon as well. We'd be asking for the citizen much more.
Yeah, so just to...
And that will go down, that's also go down.
Because this is not the number that will... So I wish I had my tax... Your tax bill? My tax bill. Because, and when we were sitting in Finance Committee, Councilman Chris Straw explained it to me last year. It was great. Which was, this eight point four three percent is not what is the actual percent passed on to the taxpayer.
Correct.
It's lower. But it impacts it. It impacts it, but we don't, I don't, I can't even... He explained it, it was interesting.
But if you look at the numbers, even though the percentage has gone up and down over the years, the amount, the median home income amount is pretty much the same. Four and a half, four and eight, four and ten.
So you're looking at the... You're looking at the dollar amount for the median home?
So I think, I want to say this, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Nasser, if we were to bring that green number down to in the fives, like you said, I think that is going to be a completely different district than we can even recognize. I think that is not only, not including these new positions, but my guess is it might even be asking to cut current positions to go back low on that number. I think we need to be focusing up on this yellow number. We can control our expenditures, and then it gets worked out in the transition with the town. I think if you go and ask... Am I... Does that make sense? That if we were asked this green number to come down to five point five, we're asking for a completely different kind of district that is not in the expectations of the townspeople here. We wouldn't recognize it.
So this will be hard for Marcy to figure, but she did discuss earlier that if you don't make any changes, don't accept the new positions, the yellow number is going to be four point three. So when the yellow is four point three, what is the green number? Do we know that or can I calculate that?
I'd have to...
You might have to research it.
Yeah, I'd have to get back and research that because I don't want to try to do it on the phone, Heather, here. I was just trying to do some difference right here really fast between the relationship between the two, right, green?
Can I speak while you work?
Yes, go ahead, Heather.
So I guess if we're looking down again at that green number, right? So, I guess if we're looking down again at that green number, right, yes, our taxes are going up. There's been an increase. And so, if you, if you lower the yellow number, let's just say two percentage points, from 7.9 to 5.9.
Right.
Right? That's going to end up lowering the green number, and that's going to end up lowering how much an individual pays. So, instead of a $379 change, it may be more like 300. And we had a 323 two years ago, right? And 300 is a bit more than 185 from the year before, but it's not doubled. And it's bringing our contingency funds.
I'm sorry, I appreciate your correction there.
Our unassigned fund balance, back to a healthy place, so that if we ever get to the position where the state cuts a million dollars and we get to a year like 27 or 2018, and we need to tap into a ton more, we will have it, right? We need to build that up so that if something happens, what did you call it, Hope, or cushion? Shock absorber. We need to build up that shock absorber. And this, this number of 379 is going to go down.
Right. I don't think anybody on the board has said, we're just going to let it fly at 7.95. So, I think that's a clear message that the superintendent has already heard.
But 5 to 6%, like Phil said.
That's where you go.
That's where I...
I think, but I think I want to address, Napster's making an interesting point around tax impact, and one thing I do want to address, and it doesn't show up on this, one of them shows up on this sheet, but there's another one that goes back a little bit further, which is why we have these continual conversations with Town Council, is the year that, it looks like 2017, 2018, the tax impact looks really small, doesn't it? It looks tiny, and a lot of people like to perseverate on that. It happened because we initially got a fairly steep cut in state revenue, and then after we had settled our budget and voted on it and everything like that, we got a little extra money than they had initially promised us. We weren't allowed to put it into our budget. It went back to the taxpayers. And so, kind of, you know, after the fact, that tax rate went down. We didn't get to use that money. So, that also is sort of an artificial, and it happened again, it happened another time, because I remember talking about this with John Christie and Michael Moore, like, this isn't, this is an artificially low number, because we weren't allowed to put that money into the budget. It didn't even go to unsigned funds. It went straight back to reduce the tax level.
And obviously, as we decrease our percentage of change on top, it will decrease it down.
Right, right.
It will probably take proportionally long.
I'm just kind of doing like a little whip around. Laura seems to feel comfortable with a 5 to 6% range. I think you'd want to break that down into like a few scenarios.
Three scenarios would be good. It's three too many.
Phil feels comfortable with that scenario. Are you willing to go out on a limb of your opinion? Well, I, again, I don't like, I don't like being just arbitrary thinking of a number, because it doesn't make sense. I want to have a reasoning behind how I get to that number. So, I'm now understanding that these low numbers are artificially low because we were borrowing from tomorrow to pay for those years. So, each year, it looks like it was really around, it's roughly 5% increase. And it sounds like, just keeping things status quo with the built-in teacher increases, we're looking at 4.3, you know, four and change percent increase. So, if we know we have to do that every year, on top of that, there's got to be some proven reasonable, like, what does it cost? How much does it cost to educate the children, and how much should that be increased in each year? There should be some logical formula, and I know that there's anomalies and things that happen in special needs, then it's changed. But I would say, every year, we're going to be funding the schools, just as they were last year, plus that reasonable increase. And what should that increase be? And that's, if I thought that was the number we got to, I'd say that's the number we present to the town. So, I'm sorry, that doesn't really do it at all.
I was going to say, that's awesome. Where is that number?
Who did that?
Is that up for them to go back and take a look at the number to say, you know, what would be reasonable to, now based on being fiscally conservative? And then they're going to present, and then it's up to us to say, is that reasonable and does that fit?
But it looks like that's what we were being held to in the past. They're saying, oh, look, you only did 2.5, why can't you do that again? And that's because we artificially created those numbers, but if we're always following this formula, this is what it costs across the last year, plus teacher increases, and then this reasonable increase that earlier, and mandates, you know, so.
So, we need to find our first capitalism.
You're sorry?
We need a fun formula for that.
And that would be justifiable.
It would be near.
And if it's 10% one year, that's so be it. That's what we ask for.
Because it would be defendable.
Right.
That doesn't exist, though.
Well, we sort of have, but our years go up and down, like, this year we had an unusual amount of students come into the high school when we didn't think they were coming in, so, and next year we have another group of them, so, numbers go up, numbers go down, and so...
And if that change is a cost, then so be it, right?
So, I think it's interesting, you make a good point. I'm not arguing your point, I'm just saying, I'm sorry, that doesn't exist. And thank you for that.
Go home and make it.
I mean, I don't disagree with that at all, I just...
It's probably between 5 and 6%.
It's between 5 and 6%.
It's justifiable.
It is.
Repeat the process.
And you... No, Marcy.
I want to just, Adam, because I agree with you. I think maybe the easy thing you're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, is, what is the, you kind of asked us already earlier, but what is the number if we didn't change anything? Like, what is the number if what we're providing today, we're going to provide next year? With the increases that we have to count.
And that's 4.3.
So, so that's 4.3. And then, the 5 to 6 range, which we're asking for, is we can see what are we going to get in addition to that? And is that acceptable, right? Is it what we want, is it acceptable?
And I think that's a reasonable way to attack it.
Yes, we have a baseline.
We have a baseline, and then we have scenarios that we now will be provided to say, okay, that is acceptable or that is not acceptable.
For example, we heard, I mean, from my perspective, we don't know what number additional teachers, we kind of heard the baseline isn't acceptable, because that's the perspective, you know, of some of our administrators. So, it's going to, you get to know, like, okay, here's the baseline, if we continue, that's probably not acceptable, but how much more can we afford to maybe get better?
And there are some non-negotiables, like Jason needs a teacher for that classroom.
That's right, and so that's going to be a...
Right, and so, if you flip to that, if you flip to that page, that, one of the new pages, it's the newest new program and position proposal that we got tonight. There are some non-negotiables in there. In special services, pretty much anything that you see in special services is non-negotiable. We're bound by law. We have a school board, class size and teacher load policy that we take seriously. And based on that, Jason needs another classroom teacher. As Donna said, that's sort of a non-negotiable. Without being specific, there, to me, are other positions that are negotiable, that might be nice, but aren't, you know, aren't going to be able to be funded possibly. And still allowing us to make gains in getting our staffing up where it needs to be in all the schools for the enrollment in the classes that we have, so.
So, maybe, I mean, helpful to see, you know, just again, pulling forward baseline, because I think it would be helpful to tell, to talk to the taxpayers and say, one of the reasons why we're going to increase is because if Jason needed a teacher, we'd be going above our policy on class size. And I think that's something that people would understand, and we don't want to do that, so that's part of this, where the increase, so that's going to be part of that.
That's part of the, how we talk about it.
So, I actually not want to see that build into the baseline, I want to show why we need it, justify being...
Hope, are you one, I can move to other people if you're unwilling to weigh in with either a range or...
I would say 5, 5 and a half, 6. Yeah, I would be upfront with that, and I do think, Donna, you have done a great job communicating around the budget, and I think that this is something that's going to need extra explanation of, you know, why, if people are just looking at increases across the, you know, the past several years, why we're suddenly, you know, obviously, we're not deciding right now what our percentages, but just going forward. I think that there might be questions in the past resistance, too. Would be interested in seeing.
Heather, have you weighed in? Have you weighed in? Do you want to?
I did, and this is less about the percentage, because I'm still at 5, between 5 and 6, but just sort of a philosophical conversation about what we were talking earlier, and, you know, how you were saying there are certain new positions that are being proposed that we will have to fill, you know, the classroom teacher and PONCO because of policy of classroom size. But I would also like to think of this district as a district that has the vision to walk, to move forward, and not just incorporate into the budget needs, but things that help the district grow and expand and become better, and just improve on what it already does so well. And so, I would like to have the philosophy as a board to also find a way to help support that and not just be status quo. And I recognize that there are times that might be tight and that might not be possible, but it would be nice if that could be sort of in our wheelhouse of what we think and how we hope to vote for this budget with that in mind.
So, I agree with the group. I think I would like to see that 5 to 6 range and see what it does and how far beyond, you know, does it address needs and does it give us a little bit forward momentum, is how Heather talked about.
Yes, yes, we're, wait, we were bated breath.
I've got a big picture answer, and then I've got a small picture answer that I'm quite confident of, but I have to confirm it with the foreign language teachers.
You remind us of the question.
It's a bit muggy, me.
It's, why, if we're trying to offer French one, why are we proposing two sections? So, the big picture answer is this, we are staffed for 511 students. Sorry, I'm a broken record on this. We are staffed for 511, which is what we anticipate. We will have 553 next year. That is 42 additional students. At least 39 of whom, I would guess, will be taking a language. They will likely be teaching, taking French, because this is a French year for the 8th and 9th grade. So, that's two sections of French. Our best forecast is, based on the information we're getting from the 8th grade, is that that would be one section of French one and one section of this intermediate French class, which we've not offered before either, which we have offered in Spanish, which has been called in the past, French or Spanish 1A, and it's going to be French foundations next year. I'm remembering my conversation with Ali Williams, the chairman of the department, a couple weeks ago, she was looking at the numbers, and the prediction was we're going to have a need for two additional sections. And I'll also say, just if you look at the numbers in terms of the foreign language teachers, there are five foreign language teachers. Four of them right now, this year, are either just below or above the school board's policy of student or teacher. There's one who's a little bit below, but next year, if we, if we don't get all five, then we'll definitely be above, and considerably above the student or teacher. That's a certainty.
Thank you. So, I miss that, because I think I was just thinking of her trying to offer, accommodate entry-level French, but there is a significant need due to enrollment to have additional sections. Thank you.
So, if you ask my opinion about what we expect with our number, since you're involved, and I give my, give my number, I would say keep it as 7.95, contingent upon the benefit and salary, because you're hoping it was going to be, you predicted for 10%, right? And I think it's definitely within the age of summer. So, it gives some points from there, and also, the rest of the information will be on you, Elizabeth, negotiating with the teacher's salary. And I think we could get something from that. If we ask Donna and Marcy to work your numbers to bring this to 5% or 6%, and Tuesday is the meeting of the town council?
No.
No?
We're meeting Tuesday.
Oh, so, town council is not meeting Tuesday.
No, so we need to deliver our budget to Town Council on, what we got here? We deliver it on the 15th of April. And that means that on Tuesday, April 14th, we need to adopt our final budget. And today is March 11th. We need to give a respectful amount of time to the administrative team to have these really tough conversations, to be able to bring back to us on March 24th what it would look like, with no, you have, you are suggesting no change. I think the rest of us are suggesting, show us some changes, then we talk again. And by then, we might have our ceiling of health insurance.
Yeah, we should have our...
By then, we'll have our, we will only have the ceiling. We will have our actual number, but we will have the range in the state, which means we know it can't be higher than. And we can all clasp our fingers and hope that that allows... Right, if the number's 13, we're just like, oh, but if it's eight, then Marcy can bring that number down, which then, you know, that means that we look at six. From what the work that they did, we've got some savings from health insurance, and we actually, now we have a 5.75 without having to go any further. So, the reason why I am so worried about going forward with just this is that I feel like if we wait for negotiations to be done, which Hope and Phil and I are working really, really hard, and it's a large group, and it does not move quickly, I can, I would love for, I mean, you can just ask about it a little bit. It moves incredibly slow. Because we're not just negotiating salary, we negotiate language parts of the contract as well. So, my worry is that if we wait for our actual health insurance number, which we don't get until April 3rd, so on April 3rd, we'll know our health insurance number for sure.
We wouldn't be prepared.
We wouldn't be prepared to do...
So, so if we do cut teachers, right, to give the number to a percentage?
No.
And then, by April 3rd, you find out from the insurance that you got money, do you come back over here and say, okay, Jeff, we can give you this position back?
So, none of these people exist yet.
Correct.
So, we're not cutting any teachers. And we're not asking for those.
When everybody asks to go around and ask, who, bring the number to 5% or 6%, that's not cutting anybody?
No.
And that's including these ones?
Those don't exist yet.
So, I'd say not putting those in the budget, but...
But we are in order, that's 4.3%. Marcy told that number to us.
That is, that is not including that sheet at all. 4.3% is included.
Does not include this.
Right.
And the 7.9 includes this.
Yes.
We don't want to just say cutting teachers, because that sounds like, you know, especially to the public. The optics, it sounds really like we're cutting. We don't want that, you know, misinformation.
The idea is that we have to figure out what we can afford to add, is how I would like to. Right? What we can afford to add. These, that sheet that you have are proposed additions.
Correct.
And so we have to figure out what we can afford to add from that list. And we're not gonna make those choices. We let them make those choices.
So this sheet, proposed positions, is 7.95%.
Yes.
And we have asked Marcy and Donna to reduce to 7.9%, right? In order to reduce that, you gotta not entertain this, right?
Yes.
If we do not entertain this, then we already know the number is 4.3.
But we're not asking to reject, we're not saying we want everything. And they make the decisions.
So. They did a beautiful job of explaining that there are certain positions that are, like special, that we have to give up.
That's gonna have to stay. But there are other things on that list that the principals and department heads will then negotiate over and say, you know, math and science is a, is a major yes, but this may be a no. And they will work together in their group.
So that's something Donna will work with with this chat.
Right. And they work on.
That's what's happening on Tuesday.
And that's what's happening.
That's what's happening on Tuesday.
And if, the reason I added this meeting, and I don't have the power, I asked people to add this meeting, is because I really feel like we need to be respectful to our administrators to give them the time that they need to do that work. Because they could, they could bring that 5, 5 and 1/2, and 6 back to us, and we might say, no. None of those work. We need to see 6 and 1/2, and we need to see 5. And then they go, I hope that's not the case, please.
Oh, they loved me.
I'm telling you, right? Please, please. We really hope it's not going there, but I'm just sad, sort of. But we, I feel like we need to be respectful in case, what if, what if the health insurance ceiling comes back at 12?
Yeah, right, right, right. And we have to be prepared for that.
So I, like, we need to have time. And we have to have a starting point somewhere. We have to have somewhere. The incredibly rational number that Hope wishes for doesn't exist. And so we have to somehow just start somewhere.
To make it work.
But I guess also, Nester, like this number, we know what this looks like. And we have this ability that to start with. And if we come back with the 5, 5 and 1/2, and 6, and we don't like any of those options, I mean, we have the ability to vote for this. Like we know that information.
Or 6 and 1/2.
Or 6 and 1/2. We're just saying, okay, what are other options? Can you give us more to work with? This doesn't necessarily have to go away if that's, if that's in, you know, in the conversation. It's, it's still there. We're just.
I just thought, once we subtract it, then it's gone. Even if we have funds available, then it's gone, we can't touch it.
They, they will, they will go in and look at different options.
So last year, somehow we got, I guess it was our insurance cut down farther than we thought. And so we did add something back in when we found out what our final insurance amount was.
And we were still able to stay below 6%. Which was our comfort point last year. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yeah, because it was a negotiable till, what is March, April 15, when the grand council meets.
I was gonna say, the go no-go day is really the 14th of April, when this, when we adopt the budget. Then we deliver it the next day. And we begin preparing our presentation to the town council. But I think it's kind of irresponsible of us to say on April 13, hey, administrators, bring us a new version of the budget. That's sort of why we're having, excited about that. He's like, I love Allminder. I saw you, you were like, yeah. That's kind of why we need to be having this conversation now. People feel all right? We're ready to go? And you guys have your guidance?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I lost my sheet where I say all the things.
Oh, public comment.
We need public comments. So I really appreciate the robust conversation around this, and I appreciate everybody's opinion. Thank you, everybody, for being willing to weigh in. It can feel really uncomfortable talking about this, and it's hard. It's hard, especially sitting here with our administrators, who we respect so much, and we appreciate all of the hard work that goes into your job and preparing the budgets. But in the end, it's, it's that hard conversation that we have to have. And, you know, further conversations will not necessarily be easy, but we can be honest and respectful. So I appreciate that that's how we did it tonight. Before we close, is there a member, we only have one member as well. Is there anybody in this audience that would like to comment at this time?
Hey.
Thank you.
For those who don't know me, I'm Sonia Medina. I'm the actual representative for the union. And I also teach French and Spanish at the high school. I live in Portland. There was a lot of conversation about the proposed new positions. And something I think important that you mentioned was about when making choices, to be careful not to change the score. And I would say to be very careful not to change the school DNA, the culture, the identity. Because there are some programs, like, you know, foreign language, of course, that starts at Pond Cove, that over the years, even though it had started in earlier grades, students have lost some contact. And you have to think, I think it's important to keep in mind, if literacy or math were taught two times, you know, out of a six-day rotation, where would our student be at the end of elementary school? And so if we want to reach a certain level of proficiency, the more contact you have regularly is really important. And it's amazing already what our teachers are able to do at Pond Cove and middle school and at the high school, and still have students who perform. But I'm not sure that sometime the, the community understands when students are taking a foreign language early on, that they do not meet a teacher regularly. And so that's also a conversation to have. But when adding new positions, it's very important to keep in mind the culture of our school and its DNA. Not to change that. Because as Heather said many times, it would really change totally what we look like and who we are.
Thank you. So at this time, if board members have any questions or comments that they would like to have answered next time, we keep the questions rolling, it's fine. But try to submit those to me via email by Thursday, March 19. Because our next budget workshop will be on Tuesday, March 24 at 6:30 PM. We will be back in the high school library, if I'm not, okay? That's what this says, so. And our topic for that meeting will include just examining the different scenarios of revised budgets that the superintendent brings back to us. So with that, I thank everybody and good luck.